1 2 3 4 5 6 7 8 9 10 11 12 13 14 15 16 17 18 19 20 21 22 23 24 25 26 27 28 29 30 31 32 33 34 35 36 37 38 39 40 41 42 43 44 45 46 47 48 49 50 51 52 53 54 55 56 57 58 59 60 61 62 63 64 65 66 67 68 69 70 71 72 73 74 75 76 77 78 79 80 81 82 83 84 85 86 87 88 89 899 860 861 862 863 864 865 866 867 868 869 870 871 872 873 874 875 876 877 878 879 880 881 882 883 884 885 886 887 888 889 890 891 892 893 894 895 896 897 898 899 900 901 902 903 904 905 906 907 908 909 910 911 912 913 914 915 916 917 918 919 920 921 922 923 924 925 926 927 928 929 930 931 932 933 934 935 936 937 938 939 940 941 942 943 944 945 946 947 948 949 950 951 952 953 954 955 956 957 958 959 960 961 962 963 964 965 966 967 968 969 970 971 972 973 974 975 976 977 978 979 980 981 982 983 984 985 986 987 988 989 990 991 992 993 994 995 996 997 998 999 1000
1 2 3 4 5 6 7 8 9 10 11 12 13 14 15 16 17 18 19 20 21 22 23 24 25 26 27 28 29 30 31 32 33 34 35 36 37 38 39 40 41 42 43 44 45 46 47 48 49 50 51 52 53 54 55 56 57 58 59 60 61 62 63 64 65 66 67 68 69 70 71 72 73 74 75 76 77 78 79 80 81 82 83 84 85 86 87 88 89 90 91 92 93 94 95 96 97 98 99 100 101 102 103 104 105 106 107 108 109 110 111 112 113 114 115 116 117 118 119 120 121 122 123 124 125 126 127 128 129 130 131 132 133 134 135 136 137 138 139 140 141 142 143 144 145 146 147 148 149 150 151 152 153 154 155 156 157 158 159 160 161 162 163 164 165 166 167 168 169 170 171 172 173 174 175 176 177 178 179 180 181 182 183 184 185 186 187 188 189 190 191 192 193 194 195 196 197 198 199 200 201 202 203 204 205 206 207 208 209 210 211 212 213 214 215 216 217 218 219 220 221 222 223 224 225 226 227 228 229 230 231 232 233 234 235 236 237 238 239 240 241 242 243 244 245 246 247 248 249 250 251 252 253 254 255 256 257 258 259 260 261 262 263 264 265 266 267 268 269 270 271 272 273 274 275 276 277 278 279 280 281 282 283 284 285 286 287 288 289 290 291 292 293 294 295 296 297 298 299 300 301 302 303 304 305 306 307 308 309 310 311 312 313 314 315 316 317 318 319 320 321 322 323 324 325 326 327 328 329 330 331 332 333 334 335 336 337 338 339 340 341 342 343 344 345 346 347 348 349 350 351 352 353 354 355 356 357 358 359 360 361 362 363 364 365 366 367 368 369 370 371 372 373 374 375 376 377 378 379 380 381 382 383 384 385 386 387 388 389 390 391 392 393 394 395 396 397 398 399 400 401 402 403 404 405 406 407 408 409 410 411 412 413 414 415 416 417 418 419 420 421 422 423 424 425 426 427 428 429 430 431 432 433 434 435 436 437 438 439 440 441 442 443 444 445 446 447 448 449 450 451 452 453 454 455 456 457 458 459 460 461 462 463 464 465 466 467 468 469 470 471 472 473 474 475 476 477 478 479 480 481 482 483 484 485 486 487 488 489 490 491 492 493 494 495 496 497 498 499 500 501 502 503 504 505 506 507 508 509 510 511 512 513 514 515 516 517 518 519 520 521 522 523 524 525 526 527 528 529 530 531 532 533 534 535 536 537 538 539 540 541 542 543 544 545 546 547 548 549 550 551 552 553 554 555 556 557 558 559 560 561 562 563 564 565 566 567 568 569 570 571 572 573 574 575 576 577
Good evening. It's seven o'clock. I'd like to call the planning board meeting to order. First order of business is old and new business. Planner's report, do we have a planner to read this?
She can send it in too.
Waiting for our planner.
Can they hear us?
Paige, can you hear me?
We can't hear her.
No.
We can't hear any of them.
Okay.
Oh, it's not here.
I can hear them.
Oh, that is cold. Florida 49 is very cold.
We got you now.
It is, with the wind.
Yeah.
No, we're hearing it through their computers.
You know, you're feeling terrible for us, Tracy. I can see that.
I just froze my butt off on a run.
Ah.
Yeah, you need to turn, can you turn them up a little bit?
Almost happy.
Alright, somebody say something.
Paige, we're waiting patiently for the planner's report.
Can they hear us?
Doesn't seem so. She's muted, isn't she?
No, she's not muted.
The meeting room is muted if anybody doesn't know that.
Okay.
Oh.
Tracy, can you hear us?
No, Tracy can't hear us.
There, no.
Oh, there we go. You just went unmuted.
Okay.
Alright, Ron, start again.
Paige, we're waiting for your planner's report.
Now you're on mute, Paige.
Okay. We'll get this, we'll get this. I apologize, I'm just upstairs. I've never made it home yet, but as you know, I'm having surgery Tuesday, so I'm trying like heck not to let Omicron cancel that, so that's why I'm up in my office on Zoom. Okay, so for planner's report, first of all, we interviewed some engineering firms, two engineering firms today, and Beals and Thomas and Environmental Partners. We have a little, we'll have to give you a report at the next meeting on sort of where we're at at that. We, stay tuned for more on that, but we did hold the interviews and we're working on figuring out what direction to head. So, stay tuned on that. I hoped, I had hoped it to be resolved tonight, but that's not to be the case. Another procurement effort that this office has been working on is Walnut Street Affordable Housing Project. We had gone out to bid, well assisted the housing authority to go out to bid, seeking developers for that project. We did interview two development teams earlier this week on Tuesday, and both teams, I'm happy to say, are extremely viable, well put together, and did a great job interviewing, so the town has really two good choices. And the FHA will be working with our consultant that we got through Mass Development to continue the evaluation. Gabby and I did ours today, submitted that to them in advance, and then they're going to be meeting on the 25th to sort of discuss, right now, the way it is, is each FHA member has to do their own individual evaluation and not speak to each other, and then they're going to be going to a meeting on the 25th that's going to be facilitated by the consultant to provide their input, and only at that point can they discuss it, you know, in an open meeting after they've done their individual ratings. So that's where it is right now. It's really quite in-depth. Gabby and I were, felt very much over our heads reviewing it. I think the FHA probably does, because there's just a lot of there there, but that's the way it is when you're developing. I will say, we've always been using the phrase "up to 250 units." Both developers submitted proposals that showed 200 units. So at this point, it seems certain that we will not be at 250, which is fine. We had just put a range in there. So it looks like we will be at the 200 unit range. With respect to Uptown, I know everybody likes to know what's going on. On Wall Street, all the foundation work, under slab plumbing and concrete slab work in the residential building has been done, and the site work is ongoing, and roughly halfway done at this point. They started framing last week, so you'll see them going vertical in the next couple months, and then you'll really start to notice the change. For the fire station, the foundation work is complete. The mason has finished the block walls, and then we're going to be moving on to brick. Framing, they're going to be framing the new stairwell and second floor partitions. The plumber has started the rough. They poured a new basement floor. The water service is installed or about to be, and then, excuse me, National Grid is about to relocate the utility pole so they can get to work on the transformer. So even though it looks kind of quiet over there, there is a lot of internal and sort of non-fun work going on behind the scenes. With respect to town meeting, the Board of Selectmen have been approached to seek reconsideration of the ban on marijuana in Foxborough, whether it's selling the marijuana or growing. So the Board of Selectmen did ask me to let the planning board know that this will likely be discussed at their Tuesday night meeting. They're just beginning to, so there's no formal action or request of the planning board at this point, but they did want the board to be aware that this may be coming up, and just as an FYI. Our tourism website is going to be launched any day. It was supposed to be launched yesterday, but we're still doing some tweaks, and we didn't want to go obviously live until everything was, in our part, great. Tomorrow, I'll be filing two grants associated with that effort, seeking, that would really escalate it to the next level. We're talking media relations, branding, and whatnot. There's some extensive grants out there through the Office of Tourism and then Mass Gaming, so we're going to file for both. Just today, we, for the application I have here, it's pretty exciting, because one of the hardest things to get is letters, a lot of recommendations. So for this application that we're about to submit tomorrow to the tourism, we have Jay Barris has written a letter of recommendation supporting it, Tri-Town Chamber, Plainridge Park Casino, Rentham Village Premium Outlets, Gillette Stadium and Patriot Place, the Maryland Rodman Performing Arts Center, Ledge View, which is the development in Rentham, right at the corner of 1 and 495, where, what's there, Eva Totoria and 110 Grill. And so that, that site supported it, and then lastly, we have here, that might be it. So that's it. So that's a great group of some major hitters. So we're hoping that really makes an impact, because we know the tourism grant will be highly competitive, and we're hopeful that we get some significant funding from them. As I mentioned at the beginning, I'm having Tuesday, I'll be out of the office after tomorrow until March 7th. Well, that's the estimate, so I'll miss you guys. Be kind to Gabby and Diana as they, as they handle all of this. You know, there are a lot of balls in the air, and I know they'll do great. They've done it before, but I do know that it's an extra burden on them. And then lastly, I wanted to bring this up about the MBTA Community Housing Choice thing, and there's too much in here. Hopefully you had a chance to read my report. I don't want to go through it all, but the gist of it is, is that the state has changed the laws with respect to housing. And the town, as an MBTA community, is mandated to establish a by right district, allowing multifamily by right of at least 50 acres in size to accommodate at least 750 housing units by right. And it's supposed to be near transit. So the interesting thing is Foxborough, even though we have a commuter rail station, sort of, we are, since it's not a permanent service, we are classified as an adjacent community. Therefore, it's a little dicier where our district has to be, but you know, the writing on the wall is chances are it would have to be in the area of transit, but it's not as clear for a town like Foxborough, because they're not counting our train station, so are we tied to it? But there are standards that we have to be, you know, it has to make sense to them. So right now, the guidelines just came out. They're, they're going to be taking comments on these guidelines. The problem is, is the guidelines are guided by the law, and that's rigid. So the 50 acres and the by right, the 15 units per acre minimum, that is all in the law, so that's not something that I foresee changing. So what this all means is, we've got some work to do. Even if we decide to reject this outright, there are some steps we need to take before we do that. By May 2nd, we have to, I have to make a presentation to the Board of Selectmen about this housing choice situation. And then there needs to be a form filed with the state by May 2nd. If we fail to do either of those things, we will not be eligible for the Mass Works grant that we desperately hope to get for the Walnut Street project. So, you know, we aren't sure that next year we'd be still eligible for Mass Works. We're not sure how this is going to go in, in Foxborough. You know, if the town does not vote to support this type of zoning district, then we will no longer be eligible for Mass Works. But to remain eligible for this year, all we simply have to do is hold this meeting by May 2nd with the Selectmen and file the form. So I suggest we do do that to keep us active for this round of Mass Works that opens in June and will be awarded in December, and then we'll go from there. I have recommended that it might be, rather than, you know, any group unilaterally making decision, perhaps it would be best to have a working group, you know, of citizens to evaluate this, because, you know, the implications of not adopting the zoning just means that we're not eligible for a bunch of grants, the Mass Works being the main one. And it might be that that's, that's okay, but I don't think that, you know, staff or anybody should be making that decision unilaterally. I think it's sort of a, a community conversation. So when I get back, we'll have to look at this, but I sent some links, and you might, I know Kevin, you've reviewed it. It's a big deal, and you know, every community out here, I mean, we're all freaking out, but it's, it's, you know, it's a big deal, so.
Paige, just a quick question for you.
Sure.
You said, is this, does this have to go before town meeting, or no, it does not?
It absolutely does. So the requirement would be that the town would have to adopt, at town meeting, a zoning district of not less than 50 acres to allow by right multifamily housing of a density of at least 15 units per acre. And that's where they get the 750, 15 times 50, is 750. So, you know, it, it could be that if there are some multifamily units in that area, they could count towards it. You want, the goal is to have 750, but they're not actually worried about building them. Like, we don't have to, what's the thing? So there's no, there's no requirement to actually get these built. It's just to make sure the zoning would support it. So it's, they're rigid. It's not, it's not going away, and we're going to have to address it one way or another soon, and in the next year.
So, so do I hear you saying that they, you have to put a, someone would have to put an article on the warrant in support of it, and then, then the body itself would make the determination about whether or not we thought it was, it was appropriate for our town?
Correct. It would be a standard zoning article, although in this instance, due to the new housing choice voting thresholds, I believe since this would be multifamily, it would probably only require a majority vote, because some zoning thresholds have now been lowered for certain multifamily or housing-friendly things under this housing choice law that was passed. So it might be a 51% vote, but I still think that, you know, the chances are pretty slim. So it would be an aggressive campaign, obviously, to even try to do it. There are, they are offering some technical assistance to communities to assist. Gabby and I discussed today whether we'd even bother, because it's sort of like, you know, the ones that are, are requiring it are the ones that are going to be assisting. So it's kind of, I don't know that Foxborough would be all that receptive to hearing from the state come out and, you know, guide us through this. So, and I, again, I understand where the governor and everybody, the sort of regulatory things are coming from. You know, there is this housing shortage. All I continue to say to these powers that be up is, help us prove it to our citizens. Because, you know, as through, we've seen it through our conversation in housing, while we all kind of agree, there's some, well, we don't all agree. Some agree that there is housing need, others don't, and others are not willing to change. So, you know, we need, if we were ever to think that this would ever, the townspeople would ever be convinced, they need to do a much better PR in proving how the, you know, Foxborough at 12.8%, you know, needs to go ahead and do this, and why it's so critical to the Commonwealth and economic development and housing and whatnot.
Well, we're at 12.8%, and there's a potential for another 90 units to be built in the, in the Seapod, you know, the downtown area, because of Joe Lynch's potential project, Doug King's project, and we're already probably at least a third of the housing stock in the town of Foxborough is multifamily. So the problem that I think a lot of people are going to have with this is that it's a one-size-fits-all kind of a thing. There are many towns around that maybe have not been as, they have not developed as much of that type of housing where we, where we have. And, and so there's a limited, I'm not even sure, there's a 50-acre tract in the town that, that would be, would be there. So anyway, I, you know, we'll just have to take it one step at a time.
We will, yes.
And see where it goes.
And they are accepting comments, so if you Google, you know, MBTA Communities Housing Choice, it'll bring you to the page that discusses it, and right now, there is a comment period open. I'm not sure I'm going to comment, because again, the law is the law, and I mean, the law with the 15 units per acre and a reasonable size and by right, that already is the problem, you know, regardless of how they determine how to implement it for Foxborough. I think Foxborough's going to have a problem with some of those standards that exist today in the law, and there's just no way around it. So, you know, they're using, the stick is going to be the Mass Works and certain other grants, and I, you know, I can almost foresee where this will go, and, and, you know, but we'll, stay tuned. But if, you know, if residents are interested, they should Google MBTA Housing Choice Communities and take a look at what's and take a look at what's there and then feel free. I think they accept comments from anybody. I'm not sure. I haven't actually gone to that, but I would think so. So, you know, this, it's going to be a process and it's not finalized, but again, the law is the law and I'm not sure they could, that they're going to change anything about that. So that's all I have on my planner's report tonight.
Paige, I do have one question on what you were just talking about.
Sure.
If we were to adopt this, but as Kevin pointed out, we probably don't have the land to facilitate such a project, what would that do for us? Would that work on our behalf or against us?
It's not clear yet. You know, the 50 acres is part of the guidelines, so that's not necessarily in the law. So then maybe that will tweak and, you know, we should probably look at the areas. But again, it's, we should probably look at the areas to see whether we even have the 50 acres. You know, I know Norfolk was just expressing frustration in one of our meetings this week because they actually, on their own initiative, had adopted similar zoning and they did 44 acres. So they're kind of throwing up their hands saying, what's going to happen to us? We did exactly what they wanted us to do, right next to our train station, but we only did 44 acres. So we don't know yet what the answer to that is. We should probably take a look at the size of potential districts and, but we don't even know where it is. We don't have a train sta, I mean, we do have a train station, but we don't. We know the Craft Group is quite interested in this, you know, and, you know, I would not be surprised that they come forward with something. But again, you know, that's going to be over, I would imagine, in the North Street area. And I, you know, I can only imagine how well received that would be. So it's, it's, it's going to be contentious and I think there's going to be a lot of discussion on this. And again, I just want to remind everybody that this is state driven. So it's not me driven. I know I've been conversational in housing, but this is not something that I'm at all driving. And I, I do agree, the one size fits all, particularly, you know, throughout the state. Like this applies to urban communities and suburban communities. So, you know, us out in the suburbs are kind of saying, you know, there should be some, some variance or some sort of, you know, gray, you know, intensity change from the inner city to out to the suburbs, but they're not. It's one size fits all as of right now.
Do we have anything on active subdivisions?
No, not currently.
Being a little after 7:05, action items, minutes from December 9.
I sent them out this afternoon. Did everybody get a chance to read them?
Right. I was not present at the meeting, so I.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not prepared to accept those yet. I didn't have a chance to read them.
You can wait till next Monday.
Okay, we have, we'll do the MyLies after the meeting.
At the end of the meeting, yes, please.
Okay, being 7:20, we have a public hearing, 7:15, continuing public hearing, definitive subdivision approval, 31 Water Street. Steven Ginieri?
Grin.
Grinieri, sorry. Missed the letter.
Are we on for Water Street?
Yes, sir. If you were in here, you would have known that.
Sorry?
If you were in here, you would have known that.
So Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. For the record, my name is Bill Buckley from Bay Colony Group with Frank Spillane from Spillane and Spillane, representing the applicant, Steven Ginieri. And so we have before you tonight two things. The first is the continuation of a definitive subdivision plan hearing. We had our initial hearing back on October 14th and went through with the board at that time. And there was quite a bit of other moving parts as part of the project. So we, we asked to be continued several times. And subsequent to that meeting, we've met with the Foxborough Board of Health on the, on getting the septic system approved for the lot in the rear lot two, while one is the one with the existing house. And then we've also met with the Conservation Commission several times, had several sidewalks with different members, and they closed their public hearing on Monday. So we expect them to issue a order on the 30th, I think it's the 31st, whenever their next meeting is, I think it's the 31st. And so what we're here for this evening and all of that activity really resulted in very little activity that concerns this board. In my cover letter, I just laid out the few things that did. The first was, let me, I'm going to plan up here. So if you take a look at the board and it's, this is a color drawing of the drawings that you have. So some of the changes that were made that have to do with division control, we changed the lot lines, lots, if you look up here, you can see, this used to be more kind of in this area here, lot line between lot one and two. And the septic system for this lot was up here and the Board of Health looked at it and said, you know, we'd really, we'd like you to push that septic system as far away from the lake as possible. So what we did is we kind of, you know, finagled this bagel here and created this odd shaped piece, which allowed us to put the septic system for lot two at least 200 feet away from the lake in both directions, from the north and from the east. So that changed the lot line there and changed slightly. One of the regulate, one of the regulatory requirements under the subdivision control law is to show the approximate location of houses, septics and driveways. You know, normally, and even in this case, we don't really know where those things are going to go. We generally know, in this particular case, for lot true, we know definitely where it's going to go. So what we've done is those, the locations of the houses and the septic has, septics have been modified, you know, again, based on our discussions with the conservation and planning. So, so that, those are shined on here as well, just because that is a requirement of the subdivision control. And then the erosion control sequence changed somewhat because again, the Conservation Commission was very concerned. And really, the only erosion control we're talking about down here under the subdivision control by law within the road is just the entrance pad because there's really no other erosion control down there. That is a depression down there. So anything that's going to, if you have siltations, it's not going to leave the site. It physically can't. There's a hole down at the entrance here, right in here. So that mostly has to do with up here, but again, it's on the drawing, so I wanted to point it out. So those are the changes that we've made subsequent to our October 14th meeting. The roadway location has not changed, the width has not changed, the grades have not changed, stormwater has not changed, none of, none of those things have changed. And the next item, I guess I'll just jump in and is the, we've also, because Water Street is a scenic roadway, we've had, we've had to file with the, actually with the Board of Selectmen, I don't really understand the process. But, so we filed with the Board of Selectmen and then the sort of Selectmen gives it to you to do all the work. So we filed with the Board of Selectmen for a scenic road curb cut. And in this case, scenic road by law is triggered because we're removing some of the stone wall along the front of the lot. The driveway itself is, as we, you know, as you know, is only 12 feet wide because that's a standard driveway. But we'll be removing around 20 feet of stone wall in order to give some elbow room when you're pulling and out of it. There's no, there are no trees down there that are on the layout that will be removed. The, the, the issues, the review guidelines, I've outlined them in my letter and I'll just briefly go over them. The first is an impact on natural, environmental and historic resources. Proposed activity is not going to have any impact on these resources as it relates to the bylaw. The removal of stone wall will be limited to that area where the roadway must access the site. Safety to the public and urgency of proposed work, proposed activity will have no impact on safety to the public and the urgency of proposed roadwork doesn't apply. I think it's worth mentioning here that, you know, Gabby and I and over the years have had discussions whether this bylaw even applies. You know, we, if you read it, it appears to me that it's written for municipal work on a road that, so that a road like this isn't turned into a, not to be mean, but an Altruax Boulevard. So in this particular case, you know, but, but it's always been interpreted to apply. But that's, that's why you see like the urgency of proposed roadwork. I mean, private developers don't do roadwork on public ways. Existing a future traffic volume and congestion that has no or minor impact on future traffic volume. One new home to Water Street will have no measurable impact. Difference in standards, if any, between Planning Board subdivision regulations and those of the Highway Department. The work is going to be in accordance with both of those sets of regulations where they apply. And as you know, we've asked for a significant number of waivers in order to just build a modified driveway here instead of a full roadway. Compensatory or mitigatory measures propose the activity within the right of way, as I mentioned, will be limited to the minimum necessary to provide the access and utility service. And finally, to design a construction alternatives to proposed actions and the financial or visual consequences of avoiding trees or stone wall. It's not possible to access this property without, you cannot avoid the tree, the stone wall. The stone wall runs across the entire front of the lot. So, but this design is an alternative to a subdivision roadway to serve two lots, which would require the potential removal of about 90 feet of wall because a layout itself, if we were doing a regular layout, it's 50 feet and you're clear to the full layout. It's not the pavement, the full layout, but you're clear to it. And then you have 35 foot radiuses on either side. So it's significantly, what we're proposing is significantly less than what would be if the board decided they wanted to see a full roadway here. So it's of our opinion that this proposal is the preferred alternative, both for aesthetic reasons and cost reasons in that the roadway will remain private and there'll be no cost to the community at any point in the future. So that concludes my presentation on this.
Okay. I have one question as far as a stone wall goes. When the project was done up on North High Street, similar situation, scenic road, stone walls, we asked the developer, when he disturbed the stone wall, to create, to continue to use the old rock and create an entrance way? Now granted, that was a subdivision. Is there anything you could do similar to that to kind of soften the appearance?
Yes, yes, we can. We could do that. I mean, we're only talking, so you'd have like 10 and 10. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be along the whole thing, but yes, yeah, we could do that.
Actually, I would think knowing the applicant, he might even insist on it.
Yeah, yeah. So we'll use the, the rocks.
Mr. Weinfeld, I'm going to ask for your assistance here. Paige had asked me to run the meeting tonight, but I was not present at previous meetings for this. So I'm kind of in the dark.
Neither was I. I was not, I was not at the October 14th meeting.
Neither was I. Do we have any questions from the board?
Just one quick question, though, and this would not be necessarily under our purview, but what is the, it would technically be a setback, but for septic purposes, how far apart do they have to be?
So under the, so under these Title V, septic systems have to be a minimum of 10 feet apart.
Oh, is that it? Okay.
Yep.
As I recall the history, we didn't have a lot of problems with this at all.
Yeah, I don't see a lot of problems with it. I was just looking at my notes and I, I had no notes. So I was looking, there was no comments from the board at that time. It was just, go talk to the Board of Health and Conservation and then come back to us. That's what I remember.
Well, at least, not speaking on the scenic road application, but on the subdivision application itself, which we did here before and, you know, discussed in some way. I actually don't remember myself, but that's the holiday season for it, right? But I do think if, again, you know, if there were ever situations where these kinds of waivers would be advisable, this, this would be it.
I think we're all in agreement with that, yes.
The less impact on this site, the better, for sure.
Yeah, I think that this would be, you know, very unimpressive. A friend of ours is a neighbor to this project and early on, they were talking about hearing about three homes going in and so forth. This is a pleasant surprise to me at this point.
Any public input on this?
Do we have any input from the board?
Before, excuse me, before we go into public input, I just want to clarify. Kevin and who else, Ron, did you, either of you do the Mullins rule exception for this public hearing?
I did not, Paige.
Okay.
My bad. When you asked me to take the meeting tonight, I did not realize that I needed to Mullins in on this one because it went back to October.
Right, right. And then Kevin, because I was just going to say, if we don't, that would mean that neither of you are eligible to vote.
Right.
If, if you didn't, so I don't know how to.
I don't believe that I did a Mullins rule either.
Okay. So that would just leave, so you'd have three members eligible to vote tonight on the, on the subdivisions part of it. The scenic road, you're both here, so it'd be different. Just wanted to clarify that.
Is three enough?
Yes, because it's not a special permit.
Let's say no Ron.
Close the public hearing, okay?
So would we suggest that we continue this and have, have Ron view the, the meeting from October 14th so that he could participate in the vote at the next meeting?
But we do have three of them.
They don't necessarily need, they only need three votes.
Okay.
We could vote. I think we'll give the applicant that option. Mr. Spillane?
We're comfortable with continuing it, so you can.
Okay. I didn't know if you wanted to go for the vote tonight, so.
One other question. Bill, you had mentioned that in terms of the location of the roadway or driveway, however you want to term it, is there anything with Conservation that could shift that at all?
No, because none of their activity takes place. None of, none of the road is within their purview, within 100 feet.
Okay. All right, so I'll make a motion, we continue the public hearing.
Can we get the input from the public that's present? I'm sorry.
Oh, is there anyone?
Sorry. If you'd like to speak, you need to come to a microphone, please.
I think everyone's kind of comfortable.
We're good.
If you'd like that, that would be Ron.
Sorry.
So do we have a date? We can continue this too? Date and time?
Well, I think that Ron is going to be out the end of the month, the January 17th.
Yes, I will not be the next one.
So it would be February 10th.
February 10th.
February 10th.
Gentlemen?
7:15.
February 10th, 7:15.
It's fine with us, you know, if we could have a draft decision.
Yeah, we can work on, on a, on a draft decision in the meantime. So, okay.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing until February 10th, 7:15 PM.
Second. Second.
Can we do a roll call, please?
Roll call, yes. Take a roll call individual.
Jeff, I.
Ron, I.
Gary, I.
Tracy, I.
Kevin, I.
Tracy, I.
Kevin as well.
Kevin's I.
And how about the scenic road, since it was open tonight, we can have a vote on that tonight?
Do we need to do that now? We can wait for the same. Yeah. Continue the same road. So have the same public hearing.
So do you want to continue that one or was that in that first motion?
We'll continue the hearing.
I think we should keep them together.
Excuse me, what'd you say, Trace?
I think we should keep them together.
Yeah, I agree. So we're going to continue the motion for the scenic road hearing to February 10th, 7:15 PM.
7:15, yes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Jeff, I.
Tracy, I.
Ron, I.
Gary, I.
Jeff?
Kevin, I.
Kevin, aye.
See you guys in a month. Okay. Little deal, excuse me, a little after 7:30 PM, project update, Lawson Farm, Ron Bonby, Bill Buckley representing.
I think Ron is here. There he is.
Very nice. Doesn't look like he's local.
No, no, I'm actually local. I'm sitting in my house in Mashpee. I am quarantined. I have the COVID virus. I have a positive test as of Monday. So that's the scenario. It's the way it goes. It's my third case.
Wow.
I've been vaccinated twice with no booster, but I've had COVID twice and I don't know if this is the variant or COVID. They don't tell you. So I just have another, I had a, I had the test Monday, and Sunday, as I said, which I shared some of that, that test, that positive test with some of my residents in, in Lawson, so that they wouldn't think that I was not being straight with them. So anyway, just an update. I have, my team has installed both streetlights approximately two and a half weeks ago. When we did install them, we installed them the same way we installed the original two or the other three lights, actually, or two lights that are on. And we used handholds. When the electrical company came out, Mr. Parent, he asked that we not use handholds. So we had to, after they were inspected by the local electrical inspector, we had to redo those, rewire them under the new scenario and have the electrical inspector come out again, which has all been done. And I've been interacting with Gabby in reference to this and interacting, telling her what's going on. I've spoken to Paige, I think, once or twice. So we are waiting for the electric company to turn the lights on. I had spoken to Mr. Parent a couple of times. He is a gentleman from the electric company. And maybe even Gabby can give you more information, but I have spoken to Mike Parent himself, and we're just waiting for them to turn them on. So that's the issue. I did reach out to all residents other than one family at Winning, at, yeah, Lawson Farm. And I did have a scheduled appointment with most of those people for Monday. I had to call it off when I received my positive COVID test Monday morning. I received that around 8 o'clock in the morning, at which point I notified them all that I would not be able to make it. I did tell them that I took the test Sunday night, so I probably called it off Sunday night because I did not feel well when I got the test back on Monday. I in fact confirmed the fact that I would not be able to attend. And so that's where we're at in the subdivision. I also supplied an outline as to critical path, as to future work to be, to be instituted in Phase Two, and also the inclusion of the sidewalk and the granite curbing for Phase One in a letter. And Bill has shared that with the board.
As Mr. Bonby said, I, I did intervene and reached out to a contact at National Grid to inquire what the status of the, those two lights are. And she, she did a little bit of research and she replied to me that the lights would be energized by the end of next week. So I'm not sure what the holdup was on, on National Grid's part, but, but the lights will be, will be energized.
So at this point, Mr. Bonby, you looking to start moving into the next phase immediately or soon?
My goal would be, we do have a blasting company. I'm waiting on PJ Hayes to update a couple of quotes that he has and a couple other contractors. My goal would be to get those completed and to, to hopefully blast this winter and to begin construction of some of the road this winter and to, it'll certainly spill into the fall, into the spring and then into the summer. So my goal is to be able to deliver buildable lots, et cetera, in the summer of 2022, which means I would have to come back to this board for bonding security and release covenant, et cetera, et cetera. And that's my goal. And my, also my goal in that letter was to have the curbing done in the spring of 2022 in Phase One, then the sidewalks, spring, summer type of scenario, because we have to get the curbing in first. And at that point in time, I will be looking for release of covenant. And so this curbing would be done in Phase One, sidewalks would be based in Phase One, and then I would be up to a point, streetlights installed, drainage operational, et cetera, et cetera, and looking for a release covenant for Phase Two in the summer.
Okay, good. Thank you. Do we have any questions from the board?
No.
Mr. Buckley, thank you. Mr. Bonby, thank you.
Thank you.
Hope you feel better?
I, I was hoping I'd feel a little bit better today, but it's a strange thing. It's up and down and today is a little down. But we'll see. Tomorrow, I'm out of, out of quarantine, but who knows?
That being said, I think the only thing we have left to do is a motion to adjourn. Do I hear one?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, everybody.
Hey, everybody. Good luck, Paige.
Yeah, good luck, Paige.
We have to sign my laws.
You sign my minutes, please?